All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular City Council meeting for March the 3rd, 2025. Mr. Attorney, is there anything to report from the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. Council convened in closed session, discussed the item of real property negotiations. There is, information was received and direction was provided to staff, but there's no reportable action.
All right, thank you. I will now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please? Here.
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 Here. Tonight, I have asked PAC 179 to lead us in the prayer and the flag salute. So, boys, if you'd like to come up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, boys. Madam Clerk, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, March 7th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, March 8th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrolcable14.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Item F, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Anything from council? No? Okay. Moving on to next Item G, Presentations. Our first presentation this evening is from the Galt Community of Character Coalition, honoring someone for caring and compassion award. If you'd like to come up to the front, members of the coalition.
Our city staff. My name is Ralph Cortez with the Galt Community Character of Coalition. We actually have two nominations to present tonight. And our first nomination, this is for the 2025 Caring and Compassion. Betty Welsh is a really wonderful and truly exceptional person. She demonstrates the most remarkable acts of kindness and compassion in so many ways. I've been so impressed by her selfless dedication to helping others. For example, she consistently volunteers her personal time to drive individuals to their doctor's appointments. That isn't just a small act. It's a significant contribution, ensuring that people who might otherwise struggle to get to their appointments can access vital health care. The relief and peace of mind she provides is invaluable. She's always ready to help others in any way she can. Beyond that, Betty is also dedicated and cherished volunteer at the Sunrise Food Pantry. Her contributions there help to alleviate hunger and hardship in our community. Her volunteer work is a testament to her generous spirit and commitment to making a positive impact on our community. We are fortunate in Galt to have many people that demonstrate caring and compassion with their willingness to give their time to help others. Betty's action helping others rise to the top. Betty Welsh is a tremendous asset to our community and deserves this honor as a true role model of caring and compassion. And nominated by Fay Gaines.
Thank you for this opportunity to present these awards to the City Council and to the city at large. My name is Lisa Klotz. I'm part of the Galt Community of Character Coalition, and I am going to read the nomination for Galen Gomez. Galen Gomez is sometimes known affectionately as the Cat Lady. In addition, she is also a true model, a true role model of caring and compassion for the important work that she does as a volunteer to change the grim outcomes of the overpopulation of cats that can cause a lot of effect in the community. For over 15 years, Galen has taken a leadership role as a volunteer, helping Galt families deal with abandoned kittens and cats, feral cat colonies, and injured and abandoned cats. Through her nonprofit, Perfectly Possible, Galen has been able to raise and utilize funds to help families find resources to get their rescue kittens vaccinated, spayed, and neutered. She has formed a group of fosters, some of us are standing right here, to help bottle-feed newborn and abandoned kittens until they are ready for adoption, and that forever home. She works with pet shops to find new owners, and in addition, Galen follows and teaches the TNVR approach to feral cat colonies: trap, vaccinate, neuter, and release. Galen's work teaching and demonstrating humane treatment of cats continues to leave a positive impact on Galt community. At the McFarland Living History Ranch, volunteer Earl Frey spotted three cats who had suddenly appeared, as they do. When he called Galen, she loaned him traps, took the cats to Sacramento to spay and neuter, then returned them to the McFarland Ranch. Galen uses her resources and time so that the historical society is not billed. Earl also notes that Galen works neighbor to neighbor, helping a little girl who cannot afford to have her kittens spayed or neutered, and finding loving homes for other adorable cats and kittens. I can speak personally to Galen's effect on the community because at Cow Waste Facility in Galt, I contacted Galen when we counted over 20 strays on our lot. These feral cats were living at the facility. Galen loaned out her traps, and the process began to trap the cats so they would get treatment and be returned to live without adding more cats or kittens that would be suffering malnutrition and cat fights. Presently, there are only two cats in the feral colony, others have found their way to another place, and there are no kittens that are coming forward from these feral cats. Galen Gomez is an outstanding role model of caring compassion to the cats in our community, but also to her students at Valley Oaks School. Her work, her tender heart, her ingenious networking ability have been able to make immediate and long-term impacts on the community of Galt, and we are all so very grateful. Thank you. Nominated by Earl Frey.
The council like to say anything?
Yeah, I just, I have personal experience with Galen as well, and she does a phenomenal job. My first experience was a ride-along right at the beginning when I did a story with her, and that was absolutely fascinating and a little scary, but, because we were out in the country, anyway, it was, it was great. And Betty, I swear, everywhere I go these last two months, you have been there, so I know this is well-deserved. And I'd also like to, so I congratulate those two, and I'd like to thank the GCCC for keeping this program going, because it's great to, we wouldn't hear about these people doing all these great things in our community, so I thank you for continuing that.
I'd like to say congratulations to both Betty and Galen. Betty, I was aware of your work at the food pantry. I had no idea about you shuttling people to doctor's appointments. That's really special for you to do that. And with Galen, I have two firsthand experience. The foster network that she mentioned, or that was mentioned, has been my home many a time. I remember more foster kittens come through my house than I can care to remember, so, just great work, and it's something done behind the scenes that people don't realize the impact that it makes on the community, but it really does. We have a lot of cats in Galt, so, thank you, Galen. Congratulations, thank you, Betty, and congratulations to you both. Thank you. All right, moving on, our next presentation will be Cow Waste Annual Report by Rudy Vacarezza.
I do think we have a, yeah, presentation up here behind me. I got some slides so I can follow around without having to turn around, but, hello, everybody. My name's Rudy Vacarezza. I'm here representing Cow Waste. So, my family owns and operates Cow Waste here. We're centered in Galt. Also, you can click to the next slide, too. I don't know who's in control of that.
It's right there on the top of the diocese.
So, we come here every year, and we try to give an annual update of kind of what's going on. It's a pretty short presentation. I mean, I'll try to keep it short. I know there's some new council members up here. I think most of you guys know who we are, but we just try to give an overview of some of the programs that we have offered. There's been a lot of change in the last two years, and even going back the last six years in the city related to our programs and what we offer, so I'm just here to kind of give you an update. And, like I said, we've been the exclusive service provider in Galt. I think technically going on since about 1985. We've been working in the city of Galt for probably about 50 years, even before that and the franchise system came in place, but, so there's kind of two elements to this. There's an update on the programs that we're offering and some of the, I guess, results of those programs, and then there's an annual rate adjustment that we do every year, and I'll kind of go through that probably a few slides back, but I'll, and you don't hesitate to stop me through the presentation if you have questions. We can also answer some questions towards the end to the, to council and the public as well. So, starting back in January 1st of 2023, we had a program change, as I'm sure everyone's aware. We were required by Senate Bill 1383, as passed by the California Legislature, that required mandatory residential organics collection. Going back a little further, there was also a mandatory commercial organics collection that was an added service that needed to be put in place here in the city of Galt. This is a mandate that came down from the state of California and then was and is regulated and enforced through CalRecycle, who's their state agency. Those programs required you now to put your organic waste from, that was going in your trash can, into your, what was then green waste can, that's now termed your organics container. So, you know, the result of this, there was multiple things. The state of California, there's a state code that requires any patriciple waste to be removed from any residents once a week, so every seven days. So, the minute that you put the food waste essentially from your trash can into your green waste, then green waste can, it now required it to be picked up weekly, just like trash is. So, it was a big change. You know, ultimately, that resulted in us needing to provide 25% more service, so it was when the cart was put out in front of your house every other week, now it had to go weekly, and as I'm sure everyone's aware, so you put two carts out every week and three carts out every other week. So, this process, we sat down with the city and staff at the time, and we went through a lengthy process, and there's some council members that were part of that, and even some staff, and we came up with a solution, and those rates and programs were enacted starting, as it says behind me, January 1st of 2023. Some of the other things that go on with that, it's not just the service level increase, there's a huge reporting element that's required from that, and I'm sure some residents have noticed and staff have noticed that, you know, we had to kind of drive around in some golf carts this year, and we're required to flip lids and do actually cart audits of what's in people's carts. There's a little picture of a tag on the cart behind me there, that the state set a program requirement that we pretty much have to audit about 10% of homes in the, in the city. It's actually like 14, but they make you guess, so we did, I think about 12% of the homes. So, that's another requirement, and then we've worked with, with staff and John Staff, and there's a lot more reporting on the city side that they're required to do that we essentially help with and have helped staff prepare, so it's kind of a big gamut of things and programs that changed. So, the result of that is now, this is kind of the standard service offering in the city, so, related to the rates that we'll see that are going to come up in the So related to the rates that we'll see that are going to come up in the presentation. So it's a three cart system. This, the three carts are all included in your monthly trash rate or not trash rate, your monthly service rate. So when you pay your bill, you get three carts and the, you know, our, our colors are a little off here. For some reason, the hue changed, but the black cart is the, which is brown on this presentation, and I apologize for that, is trash. The green cart is your organics. Those are collected weekly and then the blue cart for recycling is collected biweekly. So the standard service level within the city is a sixty-four gallon cart. I would say just over two-thirds of residents have the sixty-four gallon cart. It's kind of always been the standard service level. And, you know, we do offer a thirty-six gallon option and ninety-six gallon option as well. And within the rates, it's like our, within your service rates are actually allowed pretty much up to five carts. So you can get a second recycling cart and second organics cart at no additional charge. So if you want a third cart of either of those other two commodities, then there's a nominal charge associated with that. So kind of from a program standpoint, these, this is kind of like a tonnage report for the residential collection program. And I could have gone into a lot here, but I'm trying to keep it simple. But as you can see behind me in twenty twenty-four, so we track trash tonnage, recycling and then mixed organics. And then for a total volume or weights, I guess you'd say of, of tonnage. So on the, and on the very right column behind me, there is a diversion rate. So the programs, the initial programs related to thirteen eighty-three went in place starting in twenty twenty-three. And you can see a big jump from twenty-two to twenty-three. You know, that's, in our minds, hopefully, so the food wastes and organics program working a little bit. You know, our, our diversion rate went up from that thirty-eight percent, jumped to forty-four. And when you talk about in, in twenty twenty-four, you know, that diversion rate dipped slightly. You know, I would say that it's probably pretty flat in my mind. So it seems to me the program's working. We have diverted more waste from the landfill. That little dip, I could tell you that when it rains a lot, stuff gets heavier and it rained a lot in twenty twenty-three. And it didn't rain little in twenty twenty-four, but not as much as twenty-three. So I think from the standpoint of the program, it's, people are participating and that's good. So I think that's a win for the, the city and the residents, however you feel about the self-funded mandate that came down from the state. But I'm going to go to the next slide here. So we offer other services as well. So we offer a handy hauler and a bulky waste service to all residents. It's included in their rate that they pay annually. So each resident is able to get a handy hauler and a bulky waste service. You can kind of see here the breakdown in twenty twenty-four. There was twenty-seven hundred-ish handy hauler rate or handy hauler services that were provided, which is, it's about a three and a half cubic yard container that we go deliver to residents that they can put household waste in. And then we offer a bulky waste service as well. So that's more like couches, refrigerators, workout equipment, things like that that you're trying to clear out of your garage. So in total, you know, the way we see it, you know, there's roughly about forty-five hundred residents used and utilized these additional services. So that's about fifty percent of the homes that we service today have utilized these services. And honestly, in other communities that we serve, we do the same, these similar services. And Galt significantly higher than some of the other communities and that's a good thing. We promote them. We want people to use them. It reduces illegal dumping. It decreases trips to landfill from residents that need to happen. So we see it as a good value-added service to the community. So now we're going to get into probably the, you know, a reason why we're here. And so every year we come in and we do request and the contract actually outlines the mechanism for an annual rate increase. So the rate increase over the last couple of years, I wouldn't say it's complicated, but there's a lot of outliers to how it works. It used to be based on a, more of a straight CPI approach. And due to our negotiations back in, I mean, I don't know, Sean, we, we started that in twenty twenty-one. You know, way, all through twenty-two, it resulted in some savings that the city negotiated on their side, some savings that Cal Waste brought in and it was all related to the additional services related to the organics collection. Part of that collection that maybe I didn't touch on earlier was, you know, that, that rate going or the service for the green waste now turned organics weekly created. We had, we had to purchase three new trucks, three additional routes. It's a, it was a heavy lifting from the standpoint of an operation. So that's what resulted in the new rates that were laid out. But with that said, so the rate, as you can see, that's bolded, is the current rate that will, that has gone into effect of March first. So all residents were notified on their bills that the city put out, I think, February eighth. On the February eighth bill, there was a notice that just gave a percentage related to their rate increase. So kind of looking at the sixty-four gallon rate behind me, that's sort of the standard service level. So that rate in the prior year went up from forty-eight oh-two to this forty-nine fifty-two. So it's a change of about a dollar fifty. So it's a net result of about three percent on that rate, three point one percent. As you can see, it's, it varies between service level and I could get into that. But this is the ultimate result of the rate increase that was negotiated with the city back in twenty twenty-two. It started in twenty twenty-three. And then all other rates, which mean commercial, industrial, handy haulers and some other miscellaneous rates were adjusted by a five percent inflator. And five percent is actually like the cap for our contracts. Even if, a good example is that technically the CPI increase for this year was, I think, just about five point one percent. But because we have a cap at five percent, the all other rates were only adjusted by five percent. So, you know, I can answer questions related to this and, yeah. So unfortunately, this is something we have to come in and do. It is a mechanism of our, of our contracts and we don't take it lightly, any rate increase to our customers. We've been servicing the community here for over fifty years and we don't rest on our laurels related to this. But this is a reality and fortunately we have to come in every year and ask for these rate increases. So I mean, I can pause, keep moving on and honestly, this is my last slide here. So with that said, you know, we've been in this community for a long time. Our, we're headquartered here in Galt. We appreciate our partnership with the city and everything that the residents and even our employees who live here do for the city and us. There's a picture in the upper left-hand corner of this. This is our new, or our materials recovery facility here. We process the curbside materials that we collect here in Galt and from other surrounding areas as well. City of Galt actually collects a host fee related to any outside materials that we process from outside of the city of Galt. And then we do have an app. I always try to plug it whenever I get a chance, but it's a, yeah. So it's, it's an app and if you don't use it now, we would encourage you to use it. It gives you service notifications. If service days change, you can ask questions on like an interactive platform and we actually have a human who answers it. And if the recycle right portion of it, where if you have a question about what goes where, you can plug it into the, to the app and it'll give you some answers. So, yeah, I mean, that's kind of what my presentation is and we're willing to answer questions and I can stop.
All right. Thank you, Rudy. We appreciate the presentation. I'll kick it off with just a couple, not really questions, but maybe comments. But just looking at the graph with the sixty-four gallon can, I mean, you know, for the increase, a dollar fifty, you know, it's pretty minimal. I remember looking at those graphs and stuff back when we had those meetings for like, we met for like a year. And I don't think any staff member here, I don't know, Frank, were you part of that? Was that prior?
Frank was there.
So Frank and I think are the only staff members that were part of that. Everybody else is gone. But, I mean, just, you know, years with the meetings trying to hash out like, you know, take money from here to offset this rate increase and where can we get, you know, and this and that. And I, there was a lot of contribution from both the city and from you guys to try to, you know, get those numbers down as, as, you know, as hard as we could and, and to see the increase of a dollar fifty, you know, in the grand scheme of what things are. And I think everybody is shocked by what stuff costs nowadays, but I, I'm very happy to see that we could, you know, lessen the blow as much as possible. I want to say that the handy hauler program and the bulky waste is a huge deal. You said it. Anybody knows me knows I'm big on trying to keep Galt clean and without those, I can only imagine, you know, because going to the dumps expensive and people, people just, you know, they get lazy and they don't even like doing that. And so it's very easy for people to just go out in the country and just discard stuff, which happens a lot. I do applaud the county for being very reactive to taking care of, you know, the dumping in the, in the county as well. But I appreciate you guys having that service and I think if we didn't have it, Galt would very much, would be a lot different as far as garbage and waste. So I think it's a, it's a big thing. And lastly, I just wanted to say, you know, aside from, you know, you guys have been here a long time. You mentioned how many years in the community, but I just want to, you know, say to the public that mayor not to be aware, but, you know, Cal Waste is a big part of the community. They contribute a lot of money to a lot of events and a lot of, gosh, all kinds of things in the community. There's been money coming back from you guys. So you guys are, you know, very proactive in the community. So we do appreciate that. You and your family can pass that on to your father on my behalf. Counsel, anybody else have comments?
I, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, of course.
Silly. I'll do the silliest one. So now when I go to the grocery store and buy produce, they have new bags that say they're biodegradable. Can they go in the green waste?
The answer is no.
Okay. Just making sure. I haven't yet because I wasn't sure yet and I didn't go to the app yet. So I'm curious about the warnings when you drove around looking, or not you personally, but checking people's. How many warnings did you have to issue? Not the exact number, like a lot or just, you know, people pretty good?
So relatively, they were pretty good. I'd say on of what we, when we did the audit, I think we put out about thirty percent got a tag and they're not really warnings. It's more of like, hey, this is just an audit. We just want you to know how you're doing. You know, the states, the teeth to the audit where they're going to like require us to actually find people doesn't start for, I think, a year, I think in twenty twenty-seven, maybe twenty twenty-eight. But the goal is to ramp up and people get used to people getting these tags where it's like, hey, this is a recommendation. This is what you should be doing, but in no way is it like a warning and the, the next time you do it, we're going to charge you. And we're, we're more proactive with customers. We're not the, you know, find them and make them pay kind of company. And we never have been. It doesn't work, even if you did do it. It just makes people mad. It doesn't really change the practice. But I, I'd say about twenty-five to thirty percent got a, you know, hey, I saw this thing in there. But with that said, I mean, there were sixty percent of carts were doing what they're supposed to do.
Well, you answered part of my next question is because I know that the finding does eventually happen. So you, you think about five years-ish or three years?
Yeah, and there's a lot of conversation at Cal Recycle about how that actually works and what does that really mean? And, you know, ultimately the owners, they don't find us, they technically find the city. So we're working on behalf of the city and there's a lot of conversation about how that will actually work. And they're changing things, not the, not the, the point of the bill and what the services are, but how the enforcement mechanisms are going to work.
And did the, did that only happen for residential or did multifamily places get checked and, and businesses as well?
Multifamily is, is part of the residential mandate. There was some exemptions that occurred in multifamily. It's mainly, really the only exemption that's out there is a space waiver is that, hey, there's no space to put these carts or these services and how they're constructed and their enclosures and traffic flows could prevent that. So that's the only waiver. And I believe there's two, don't quote me, I mean, three multifamily properties that currently have a waiver that will be reevaluated in three years. Take that for what it is. I've been trying to figure it out, so.
Okay. And then, and I think I know the answer to this. I'm glad to hear that the community is, is utilizing the handy haulers and the bulky, bulky waste. Obviously that goes against our total tonnage, correct? Do you think because we're throwing all that, that that's what's throwing off some of our?
No, I really don't. And so when we do, if it goes into handy hauler, it pretty much goes in the trash. But when they do bulky waste, I'd say like seventy per, sixty percent of any bulky waste that goes out there is actually recycled. So we do all the scrap metal, the appliances and a couch goes to the trash. But we go around with kind of two vehicles. So there's a rear loader and a flatbed. With the rear loader, we go get the trash and the flatbed comes back around and gets a lot of the scrap metal, which is surprisingly quite a bit of stuff that gets put out there. Because that's the stuff you really can't break down without a saw or a torch or something like that. Appliances as well.
Well, thank you and thank you for serving our community and I agree with Mayor Farmer. I know that having been involved in a lot of events throughout the years, that Cal Waste is one of the first to volunteer and be there in one capacity or another. So thank you very much for serving our community.
I'll start with saying thanks for the app because it reminds me a lot to put out my trash on Monday nights because I forget. But it is a great resource. My couple of questions are just, I'm a numbers guy, right? Can you help me understand why if I have one sixty-four gallon trash can, it's fifty dollars? And if I have two, it's a hundred and five, instead of it just being double what the one cart would be?
So there's a little more history than just the recent contract change that we did. And to shortly answer your question is because a consultant that was employed by the city back in two thousand nineteen came in and set those rates. And if I remember correctly, it was common practice for second cart users to pay roughly ten percent more than single cart users because they're, the attitude at the time was the more you throw away, the more you pay. And it's still an attitude in the state, but I would say outside of the organics increase that happened, the rates that were set, so the way the organics increase happened, it was in addition to the current rates. And in two thousand nine, the city employed a consultant that we worked with over about a year and they came up with the current rate structure that's in place. So.
Okay. And I don't think you know the answer because it sounded to my next question was, it has to do with the fines. When, say I, you know, throw something away that I'm not supposed to in this certain trash can and I get fined, where do those monies end up going?
So there's probably a couple of layers to that, but, so currently now, we do enact contamination charges for customers. Usually it's not the first time. Honestly, for us, it's usually the fourth or fifth time that you do it. And we've done that for, for years, like in recycling, if you're throwing trash away in your recycling cart, there is a fee process involved and there's, it's called like a special to where if it's your recycling day and it's contaminated with trash, then you have to, then you're charged as a special rate because I got to get a truck to go back by there and dump it in as trash. And, you know, so that's how that works. But from the standpoint of with the new organics program, like the, the fees would go into effect in twenty twenty-seven. If you were throwing plastic bags into your organics cart now, I would say that fee could happen today. But my customer service would reach out to you as the homeowner probably at least three to four times. And if it's within, I think our policy is, if it's within a six-month window and you get three warnings the fourth time, we will enact a charge. So.
Right. But ultimately, where do the, do those monies go to? Because it's not, it's my understanding, it's not going to come to the city.
So it, a portion of it will come to the So it, a portion of it will come to the city through the franchise and admin fee. So the monies would come to us because we're the ones that, uh, would then be charged to figure out where to put that stuff. So, uh, if it was in your organics cart, we'd have to dump it as trash. It would be an added trash volume. Uh, so we would collect those monies. But the state's, uh, just has a policy where you can't not charge people.
Right. Is any of it going to Cal Recycle?
No.
Okay.
Other than through their like monthly monitoring fees that we already pay. I mean, that's the best way to answer that question.
Okay. That's, that's all.
Rudy, I have one more. Go ahead. Matt, do you have questions?
Uh, just one question. Uh, how many employees do you have now working in the Galt operation?
Uh, we got about two hundred and five people that are there on a daily basis. I'd say about forty percent are Galt residents, rest are from the area and region. Yeah.
Is that a couple of other quick questions that may, maybe, uh, think while, while my fellow council members were asking questions. So, you know, we live in this lovely state that always likes to come up with new things to make us abide by. And a lot of times those things come, uh, in a cart before the horse scenario, in my opinion, like with recycling, you know. I know that we talked a lot about the, the, the destination of recycling that you guys is collect. At one point changed and nobody would even take it. So we're being forced to recycle more, but yet, you know, the overseas destinations that were once taking it were not. Do you see any, you guys pay close attention because you're in the industry. Do you see any kind of a legislate, legislation that's being talked about or discussed or any things that could be coming down the pipe that could be a big deal that would affect your business and then subsequently affect Galt that you would, could bring up?
Yeah, I, I think the, the one hot point that, you know, kind of just changed and everybody's trying to figure out is this electrification of fleets that
I was just gonna ask you that.
The city's dealing with too. But, you know, there was, there was a hard, you know, mandate, um, that by, you know, twenty twenty-seven, ten percent of our fleet, and then twenty thirty, twenty-five percent, and so on and so on, until I think twenty forty, a hundred percent needed to be electrified. Um, since, uh, they have altered that course with the new, uh, federal administration and they actually, there was a diesel truck ban that was in place that, uh, starting January first of twenty twenty-four, I was no longer able to purchase a diesel truck. Anything would have to be electrified. Um, that ban has since been lifted. So that was the big thing. And even in our, our contract, we actually hadn't, we knew something was coming. So we wrote in, hey, if something happens to this, we might need to sit down. But that's been lifted. We're not really sure where it's going. Carb's still gonna try to come at us in a different way. But I would say it's the electrification and, uh, air resource management is gonna be one that could potentially affect us the most. I think with recycling and organics, we're pretty mature down that road. Um, but it's the electrification.
Yeah. I was just, that was my next question. So I figured you went right into it. But yeah, I remember you, I came out and you guys let me drive the electric garbage truck that one day. But the cost of those and what, you know, that was crazy, just to think what other cost and the lifespan and all that. Just frustrating to have to, yeah. So, well, I think that's all I have unless counsel has any other comments. All right. Well, thank you, Rudy. We appreciate it. And, uh, um, keep up the good work and, uh, and we'll see you back here next year, if not before.
Yeah, I think I'll see you guys in a couple of weeks, actually. Uh, I don't know. I think we're trying to set something up for you guys to come to the facility and.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah. So I think, uh, thank you, Mayor, council, staff.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, we will move on to item H, public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Uh, no public comment.
If you, if you, yeah, if you bring your public speak. Yeah, you gotta bring that up and hit Tina.
Did it come to pub comment?
Yeah.
You can go up to the podium and state your name.
Good evening, city council. We are here on a positive present, not presentation, but comment. So just, uh, my name's Michaela Johnson and this is Becky Ronsby. We presented to the council in September of twenty twenty-four regarding our Galt Children's Makers Market. I know there's only one council member that participated and heard it last time. And I know there's a few other people here, but we had an amazing event. We had fifty-six children participate, I'm sorry, ninety children participate, fifty-six booths. We had, um, hundreds of people show up and shop these kids booths. The concept of the Galt Children's Makers Market is, uh, giving young entrepreneurs a chance to sell, create a business, come up with a product and sell it to the community. And, uh, we kind of put this together in six weeks and it was a huge event. So, uh, the city had approached us and we approached them about partnering. So.
So we approached the city and we were super excited at the fact that we didn't get any pushback. I was nervous. I was ready for them. And they gave it to us with open arms. So we appreciate that. The city of Galt, the Saturday market, um, we are excited. So one thing that's different that we're doing this year is the, um, oh my gosh, the workshop. So we're having a pre-workshop. So we want every kid to be able to feel like they can do it. So we want to show them ideas of what they could do, how they could do it, how to run a business so that they were ready for Sean Farmer this time. So they need to know, you know, their profitability and how to give change and, and just great ideas. So we wanted to make everybody feel comfortable to do that. So that's a big thing. So everybody is welcome to come and be a mentor. It's gonna be pretty casual. We just want those kids to feel good about what they can do and to be prepared when they get judged. Um, so that's huge. That's on, I dropped my notes somewhere. So this is my notes, on March thirtieth, from two to three. Um, so that's new. Our sponsors have really stepped up. The people are coming out of the woodwork to sponsor this event and we really appreciate that as well. Um, we're out of sponsorship slots because the businesses have come to us and said, we want to do this. So we're making other things up so that they can still contribute. Um, so we, we just really appreciate it. It's gonna shut down the street from, um, down there by the mix down to, what?
Fourth Street.
Down to fourth, from Fourth Street down to us on Seventh Street. So that's really was our main thing. We want those kids to feel like they're in the Saturday market and that's what we're gonna do. So it, it's, it's pretty exciting and the kids are super excited about it as well. So to give more information, the event is on May third and it'll be in conjunction with Saturday market. So it'll be the same time. Um, they are partnering with us on this and, uh, we will have over ninety booths this time. So we expect to have several hundred children participating. Uh, to give you just a brief overview of how it works, they have to send an application to our online platform. They have to answer a bunch of questions. They have to come up with a logo. They have to come up with a, um, business plan and they have to send us a marketing video so that we can, uh, post it on social media. So we are trying to cover every aspect of business so that the kids, uh, can, you know, have different opportunities besides just having school and education come that way. So, uh, we're asking the community and council members to spread the word on having kids sign up. There's an April deadline, which I can get more information on that. Um, like she said, we have a workshop. So if people are on the fence and they're just interested, uh, maybe in what it's about and they want more information, they're not sure if they want to sign up yet, it's great to come to that. We have our members coming to that, even if they've done the workshop before because we are changing some things this year. The chamber is partnering with us. Uh, they are helping with businesses to mentor our kids. They're helping with throwing a mixer this year, which is super exciting. We are gonna have like a celebration for all of the kids that are participating so that they can, uh, come and have ice cream and, you know, just like. Like we do, like a big chamber. Situation, yeah. So, um, again, we are asking the community to spread the word to sign up. We're asking for judges. Sean can speak on that potentially. We are changing our judging platform. Like we only had three last year and we're gonna do at least fourteen. So if anyone's interested in judging, we'd love that. And, um, we have a social media called Galt Children's Makers Market. You can find all the videos, more information there, and also the link to the website for applying. The judges is really important. I would love to see everybody here do the judging. It's super rewarding and the kids really get into it. So we really need judges. Again, it was a, a show last time because it was hard on the three judges that we had. So we really need that. We need mentors. Really casual on March thirtieth, we just want those kids to feel good about it. Uh, one last thing is we want to reach every single kid in this community regardless if they have the funds to start a business. We have that covered. So if kids need money, we have money to help them. Um, so that is our biggest ask is to get this out to every single kid. We're partnering with the schools too to get the information out. So thank you for your time. If you guys have any questions.
Thank you.
I just wanted to know, are you gonna judge again?
It was very fun. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. You should be a judge.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. It was, uh, it was something, you know, some of these kids, they, uh, you know, they're, you're asking them how much does it cost? And they break down the product, like how much it costs this and this is my overhead and this is my product percentage, how much I'm making. And then I would try to hit them with something they weren't thinking of. And some of them were super sharp and they had all the right answers. So I was really impressed. So, um, it was, it was really awesome. But yes, the judges were super overwhelmed because there was way too many kids for how many judges. So hopefully we can have a lot more this year. So. Any more public comment? Nope. Okay. All right. Moving on to item I, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions and committees. Mr. Pratt?
Okay. Yes, I did attend Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, uh, meeting. First one I've attended. Um, it's pretty well attended. I was impressed. Uh, had a good board on there of fourteen members, um, number of different topics. I think the one that, uh, that was pretty interesting was the, uh, there's a company that's actually building a, building a plant on Twin Cities to convert wood into hydrogen. So it was discussed in length there and they're, they're getting a grant too, or some, some monies to get that started. And they believe they'll, they'll be profitable. It's not gonna be a government program, but they are getting some seed money. And it's close to us. So it's very interesting. They'll be able to, uh, you know, fill vehicles with hydrogen from that location. Um, the air quality board, uh, jumped on it pretty quick because most of them were not aware really that this was happening. And it's the first time they've reported out. Uh, Pat Hume, our, uh, our board supervisor, uh, is on this council and, uh, he wasn't aware of it. So it kind of caught him off guard. So, uh, but it looks pretty interesting. And the air quality, uh, board was very interested in, you know, the newest thing out right now is, uh, uh, San Joaquin has recently said that, you know, you can't burn your, your crops at the end of the, at the end of the growing season. So, so the air quality board was very interested in can you guys convert that stuff into the hydrogen? And they explained all this stuff and, uh, and went on to say that that's a possibility down the road. This is like a first step. They're going to be specifically doing this with, uh, the wood that's coming out of the, uh, you know, where they're clearing in the forests. So that's where they're starting this out. Uh, I think I'll probably reach out and try to get some more information and, and maybe see if we get a tour or something out there when they get going on this thing. I think it, it's pretty interesting. Uh, Twin Cities, uh, he said four miles on the other side of Twin Cities. I believe there's a, a corporate facility or something there that had some land or something they're taking over and are gonna be part of. So, um, that was very interesting. Um, the meeting was on the twenty-seventh of February, uh, which is a monthly meeting. So that's all I've got to report on that one.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Mr. Reed?
I have nothing to report.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Rodriguez?
So I attended the, uh, CACOG, a general board meeting on the twentieth of, of February. And, um, a lot of, there was a lot of, um, review for those of us who were new. So we went over board policies and, and different things like that and heard some up, some general reports. One of those reports, which they call the blueprint for trans, um, for transportation for the most part, they actually are going to be making rounds and coming to the cities to do that presentation. So we should be getting a call in the next couple of months to have them come to city council. So I won't bore you with all of that. Um, what I, I picked out something that I, I thought was a little interesting. Um, we, the board, kind of like the, the city council becomes the, the committee for the redevelopment funds. The CACOG becomes the, the committee for the Capitol Valley Regional Service Authority for freeways and expressways. And pretty much one of the main things that we are over are the call boxes, um, up and down the valley, right, um, around here, including the ones on trails and things like that. Well, those, there is only one vendor in the entire state that services those and, um, his, the price increase that's coming was way too much to bear. So just to give a quick example, the only funding mechanism for those call boxes are when you either lease or rent a car. That first registration, they, a dollar of that is, goes toward that. So you can imagine, it's not a every time you register your car, it's a dollar toward it. It's just once it's purchased or leased at that time. And so funding, there's just very little funding for those. So the decision was made to eliminate all of them in our areas. Um, so over two hundred and eighty of those call boxes over the next several years will start disappearing. Those include all the trails along the American River. I didn't realize there were car, uh, call boxes out along there, but all of the, on the trails are all going away. Um, but before anybody panics over it, they obviously did a lot of studies and I thought it was kind of interesting. So, um, the call boxes average one call a year. It's used once a year. And we've been spending almost a half million dollars a year to maintain and, and keep these up and going. So, um, I did look at the two call boxes closest to us on ninety-nine. Um, we have one just north of us and one just south of us. And one of them wasn't used at all the year that they were monitoring. And the one south of us was used once. So, um, and then when, when it was asked, what are those call boxes used for? I mean, what are people calling about? Directions, most of the time. So, um, they did make sure we, uh, they, one of the qualifications that we had, that CACOG had asked was to make sure that anywhere that call boxes were being taken out, that there was actual cell coverage. And there is where they're all out. So, um, you'll start seeing those starting to disappear. I think there's, um, two hundred and ninety or eighty or something like that in our area. They are leaving six and those six will be up on, and I don't know how many are familiar with it. I'm familiar because I have family up there, but the Forest Hill Bridge where there are always emergencies, especially during the winter. So those six will stay up, but Placer County has agreed to take care of the costs for those maintenance. So, um, but other than that, um, the rest of it was, uh, pretty mundane, just going over, you know, be a good, be good to your fellow committee members and things like that. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Very interesting. Um, kind of like phone booths, kind of going the way of the, yeah. Uh, I myself, uh, only have one thing to report. I attended the, uh, last night, attended the Galt Youth Commission meeting in these chambers. And we, uh, introduced one of our new mentors, Mr. Harris. And, uh, it was a very good meeting. We basically went over, um, a lot of the events that the, the youth are gonna be participating in, a lot of things upcoming. We had two public comments, um, from organizations who were asking, one was the Sunshine Food Pantry and another was a new, um, organizations informed for veterans and, uh, and seniors. And they are asking for some, some kind of, um, um, collaboration, that's the word I was looking for. I was the newest store in the sea. I'm like, took my time. Some collaboration, uh, with the youth commission on that, um, on some projects. And so, uh, lots of, lots of activities from the, from the youth, uh, this year. And so, um, should be, should be very exciting. So with that, we'll move on to item J, which is our information and consent calendar. It is recommended that items one through two be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and or action is requested by a council member. Anybody have anything they want to pull from the consent calendar?
I just have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
So, uh, if you guys haven't figured it out, I'd, uh, I like to look at the warrants for any large sums of money that leave the city. And I reach out to the city manager and. And I reach out to the city manager and a lot of the people sitting over there to find out where these monies are going. And the two, the two that stuck out to me were the California Waste Recovery System, which is basically the money that we get from our residents, that we pay to the gentleman that was just up here, for the sum of three hundred and ninety thousand. And then the other one was the sum of one point one, just over one point one million dollars to George Reed. And I thought I knew what that was from, but I wanted to confirm, and that's another payment for our C Street. But I confirmed the public works that were, I think it was seventy-eight percent complete paying off that project. So we only have a couple more payments due on that. So just in case anybody was looking at the numbers and wondering what those are for, that's what those are for.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reed. With that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve item one, which is receiving file warrants for a period ending February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And item two is the minutes of the regular meeting from February the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
All right, motion moved by Councilman Pratton, seconded by the mayor. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Consent calendar approved four to zero. Moving on to item K, scheduled matters notice of public hearing. Our first item tonight, item K one, is going to be the GALT municipal code amendment in accordance with the Housing Element Program, H E K, implementation sequo exempt section one five zero six one B three. Ms. Mendez?
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council, Amy Mendez, the interim community development director. I am here this evening to present an item, which essentially is a proposed GALT municipal code amendment pertaining to the Development Code chapters eighteen point one-two and one eight point one-six, which is related to our housing element implementation. The housing element, as some of you may not be familiar, is an element of the general plan, which provides guiding policy for land use within the city specifically related to housing development. Unlike other general plan elements, the housing element is subject to detailed statutory requirements and mandatory review by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, which is H C D. That's really the reason we're here this evening. As part of our housing element, we have a housing element implementation matrix that contains several items that are to be implemented as part of our housing element. Item H E K is the item that we are here this evening to discuss. The adopted twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine housing element includes implementation program H E K, which requires the city to add a new R four A residential zoning district, which is twenty to thirty dwelling units per acre. This is the highest density zoning that we have in the city. And that the zoning be consistent with all by right requirements under Government Code Section six five five eight three. So back in March of twenty twenty-three, the Planning Commission recommended that the city council adopt an ordinance amending sections eighteen point sixteen point zero two zero and eighteen point sixteen zero four zero of the GALT municipal code regarding high-density, multiple-family residential dwellings to comply with program H E K. Subsequently, on May second of twenty twenty-three, the city council adopted an ordinance amending these sections of the GALT municipal code. And at that time, we thought that we were in compliance with element H E K, or program H E K of our housing element. However, on October sixteenth of twenty twenty-four, we received a letter from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, essentially stating that the program H E K was not completed because the R four A zone did not fully comply with Government Code Section six five five eight three in regards to by right development. Essentially, H C D noted that the adopted R four A zone did not allow affordable housing by right since the project in the R four A zone would require Planning Commission design review, which technically is considered a discretionary permit. Basically, they want any project, any project that is twenty percent affordable in the R four A zone to be allowed by right and not have any type of discretionary permit required as part of the development. So the action required tonight essentially is to amend the GALT municipal code to modify the maximum allowable density for the R four A zone from twenty-four dwelling units per acre to thirty dwelling per nets, dwelling units per acre. This is just a cleanup. It was missed in the zoning code amendment that was done last time. So this is just some text updates that have to be made. Really what the item with H C D is, is regu, is the permit by right in accordance with Government Code Section six five five eight three, where residential projects in the R four A zone that include a minimum of twenty percent of an affordable project must comply with residential design standards in the GALT municipal code. So we have the GALT municipal code design standards already that are incorporated as part of our municipal code. The project, if it is a twenty percent affordable project, would have to basically adhere to those design guidelines, and no discretionary permit by the Planning Commission will be required. If it's not an affordable project, the city would still be allowed to require a design review on the project. So it's really this affordable component that is the sticking point with the H C D letter. Also, on February thirteenth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider this item and did recommend that we bring the item to city council for adoption. And so tonight, we're asking that council open the public hearing to receive comments from the public. And then upon closing the public hearing, introduce and waive the first reading by title only of an ordinance amending chapters eighteen point one-two and eighteen point one-six of the GALT municipal code in accordance with Housing Element Implementation Program, H E K, in the adopted twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine housing element. And just for your knowledge, this is probably one of several items that we'll be bringing to council over the next year or so, just for implementation with our housing element. And so with that, I will ask council to open the public hearing, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and kick off a little council discussion here. So, uh, just, so in layman's terms, for those of you who are watching, our housing element basically is the state coming to us and saying, you have to make your available land that's available for development. We have to have so much of it be made available for low density, which would be a regular type housing, and then higher density is going up to the one you mentioned, which is the highest density. And then we send that in. This happens every eight years, right?
Correct.
So that we did this, was it two years ago was when we redid this, or was it a year?
This was adopted in twenty twenty. I'm looking at Kristin, hoping that she.
Okay, so somewhat, yeah. I remember, but, so, and then we have to, they basically, we turn that in and say, here's what we got. And then they look at it and say, no, no, you need to change that, you need to change that. And there's a back and forth process, and then finally they approve it. And this, for a lot of you, because a lot of the people in the public are always upset when they see building and development, and why are we doing this, why are we doing that? This is the thing that I refer to a lot about the state basically mandating housing development. So what I'm understanding from this, just in layman's terms, is that, and I funny the word affordable, because it's such a buzzword when there's really no such thing, but. So basically, they're saying that if, if a project comes forward that is twenty percent, deemed twenty percent affordable, that the Planning Commission has no discretionary to say, to, to, to pick what the project's supposed to look like, like design elements, like the, the way the structure looks, you know, that kind of stuff that they normally do. They basically have no input on it. It's just, goes forward.
The project would have to comply with the design guidelines for multifamily, which are included as part of our development code already.
Okay, so it would just have to abide by those that are already in the municipal code. But the Planning Commission, which oftentimes will look at a project and say, you know, I would like there to be a little more decorative, something, something on the front of a house, or can we do some better lights, or things that maybe the, the planning commissioners don't like or would like to see changes. They have the discretion to do that on ordinary projects, but in this case, they would not. Is that correct? Okay. I just love being forced to do stuff. Any comments or any questions for Ms. Mendez before I ask if there's anybody in the audience? Okay, Mr. Reed?
There we go. Got it. So what is H C D considered to be affordable units? Because I've seen, you know, you drive around town and you see these signs of, it's affordable housing, starting in the four hundred thousands. And so what is that, what does this twenty percent of affordable units mean?
I will try. So when it comes to the term affordable, it means many things to people. But in this context, we're talking about state-defined affordable housing, which is not the same as your neighbor saying, this house is not affordable to me. So it's based on the annual income. And H C D determines, you know, there's low, there's moderate. It's based on a percentage of that to qualify as affordable, state-defined affordable, which is what this would apply to.
So there's no like, there's no definition of a dollar amount saying it's going to be two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand, so on and so forth?
No, but currently the, it's a hundred and thirteen thousand is the median income for this year. So there, the numbers change every year. So the definition is not going to include a specific number. It's going to relate back to the annual incomes in a percentage.
They do use a matrix of sorts. So if someone comes forward and says, we're going to build an affordable project in order for that to be deemed and fall under this guideline, the, the price point of that project has to be in a certain area based on the matrix that the state has determined based on incomes and stuff, yeah. So there's something there. Right?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and council. There is, you know, a, a strict definition for affordable, deed-restricted affordable from the state. So essentially, we have a handful in the city that are deed-restricted affordable units. You know, the most common or popular one is GALT Place. And there's a, a variety of different thresholds. There's extremely low, very low, and low income. And generally, the state consider, and I think Kristin mentioned that every year HUD puts out an affordability list, and it's a pretty large matrix identifying a family of four, what the maximum, or what the, you know, maximum, or what their annual income could be to be defined as affordable. And generally, it's thirty percent of your gross income cannot go toward a combination of rent or, you know, mortgage, you know, and other items like utility payments and things like that. So that goes into the calculation that HUD puts out on a regular basis for the various regions to use as affordable. So an income-qualified family in California earns a lot more money than, you know, an income-qualified family maybe in a, in a different area. And so the price of the rent or the home cannot exceed thirty percent of the gross annual income of that family. And that's generally how they determine what that price or what that rent should be.
I thought you said thirty percent couldn't be used for, so it'd be, exceed seventy percent?
No, so yeah, essentially, yeah, I got, I might have gotten twisted on both of those. So the total number of, the total amount of rent and utilities can't exceed thirty percent of their gross income. And then that sets the rent or the price.
All right, so it basically, and based on that, they'd figure out what the average family makes, and then they can do the math and figure out, and that's how they come up with.
Correct.
Yeah. So we don't, do we have, we don't have, have we had any projects recently or in the pipeline that meet this? Nothing? So again, just for the public that's watching, just because we, you know, people get freaked out when they say, like, you know, the housing element, I think it was like eight or nine hundred homes, the last housing element, and then it went to like nineteen hundred and change on this housing element, right? So it was a huge bump. So we were required, so GALT is required to have land available to build nineteen hundred and some odd housing units of varying densities. But that doesn't mean that we're going to do that. I mean, in many cases, we already actually had projects in the pipeline that were going to meet those numbers anyways, but maybe, yeah. So anyways, but so people shouldn't, you know, doesn't necessarily mean we're going to have a bunch of high density everywhere. Somebody has to come along and want to build that, right?
That's correct. So essentially, that housing element typically will, will meet our affordable requirement through the higher density. And, you know, cities, you know, across the state historically struggled, you know, meeting the building part of it. You know, you can plan for it and have your density. But what the state also requires you to do is to remove restrictions that prevent, you know, an affordable builder from coming in and building in your city. And at some point, I think the state was going to get more serious about the construction of affordable housing and require some sort of city assistance for affordable units. So for example, some cities have an inclusionary requirement for home building, where if a home builder comes in and builds a hundred units, twenty or twenty percent need to be affordable. Or some cities, like Elk Grove, has, you know, an impact fee for affordable housing that they pool, and then they use that funding then to go attract affordable housing units. And then some cities will reduce their impact fees for affordable housing. So so far, the city, or the state has not mandated those type of items, but I, I suspect at some point that they would.
All right. So again, for just the public, the city is, has to allow a project to come along and do that. Doesn't mean that we're going to go build that project. It just means if someone comes along and wants to do that project. So I just want to make sure, because a lot of people don't seem to, when I talk to people on a daily basis, some people don't understand that's how it works. They think the city's going to go out and do that, so.
Can I ask, I have a, a question now more, now that Chris, the city manager has gone on to there. It makes me think about our C F Ds and our bonds that we have currently, the school bonds, that if a builder comes in, they're going to have to join a C F D. Is this going to kind of help or just discourage a builder to come in? Because how, how does a low-income or affordable housing development absorb those C F D? I mean, because we're seeing that right now. We're going to see it a little bit later today. Are we going to get in trouble?
No, so it does contribute to, obviously, the cost to maintain, you know, an affordable housing. I mean, I don't remember how ours was written, but I know some will exempt affordable housing projects from, especially like the, the maintenance C F D.
Okay, so I wondered that. My other, less of a question than a comment while I was on planning. I think I said this at my last meeting, and I'm hoping that Mr. Pratton will back me up, having been on planning. Since the state is taking, doing this by right, when was the last time we looked at our multifamily design requirements? And should that be something we're looking at right now? Since if someone wanted to come in, they could just take something that could have been approved fifty years ago and, you know, and build. So I would like to see, at least planning, looking at the minimum requirements that we have for multifamily. And I would also like us to look at the minimum requirements, our design requirements for even single family because at least the, my time, my tenure on planning, every single development that came in, we were asking over and above what our design element is, such as two lights on a garage, or, I don't know, mixing up the, what they, what the community looks like, what the street looks like. Every time we're asking this, if that's just is our base, maybe we need to raise the bar a little bit, both for, and, regular design, but also specifically for multifamily, or if this, something falls into that affordable housing, that we don't have any control over what they're going to look like, that maybe we need to raise the bar. So whether planning needs to look at that, maybe, maybe it's a joint session with planning and council or something, you know, in the near future, looking at that.
We've actually had recent Planning Commission meetings where we've talked about bringing back on some of the meetings that we don't have items scheduled and starting to talk about what those design guidelines look like, because we do hear the same things from a lot of the Planning Commission meetings as it relates to design guidelines. Specifically related to some of the single-family design guidelines. I believe the multifamily was updated recently. I know that I did have our planning consultant take a look at our design guidelines to ensure we didn't, with this, we didn't need to update them. And she thought that they were good in terms of, from her feedback, as it relates to the design guidelines. But we will be evaluating those as we go through the single family as well, so that is something we're looking at.
So you don't feel like this is something that needs to be mentioned as a future agenda item or direction to do that? You think the Planning Commission is already doing this?
Oh, yeah. We, we've already talked about doing that, because there's a lot of things that continue to come up at Planning Commission that are asks from a lot of the single-family home developers. And so it is something we've talked about just recently. So we'll be coming back to Planning Commission.
Is that an ordinance? Does that have to come back through us eventually when?
Yeah, ultimately, yes. Planning Commission cannot make policy, you know, they can only recommend. So it would start there for a recommendation and then come to council for approval.
All right. So the public hearing is open currently. Do we have anybody who wish to speak, wish to speak on this item? You can just raise your hand, and I'll call you up to the dais. Okay. We have any further public, or, sorry, any further council comments on this subject? No? All right, well, with that, I'll, one more chance. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item before I close the public hearing? All right, well, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And with that, we'll be looking for a motion to introduce and waive the first reading by title only of an ordinance amending chapters 18.12 and 18.16 of the Galt Municipal Code in accordance with Housing Element Implentation Program HEC in adopted, in the adopted 2021-2029 Housing Element. I have a motion to do that.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilwoman Rodriguez, seconded by Councilmember Pratton. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Aye. Approved forward zero. Moving on to item K2. Subject is ordinance amending the City of Galt Municipal Code regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. SEQA exempt PRC 21080.17. Ms. Mendez?
We have our associate planner, Stacy Schaefer. She's going to be giving the presentation this evening, and she's joined by our senior planner, Kristin Bits, for assistance as it relates to some of the questions that might come up.
Good evening. Good to be here tonight. This item is for an ordinance amending the City of Galt Municipal Code, Chapter 18, Section 16.080, regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. In 2024, the California Legislature approved, and the governor signed into law, two new bills, Assembly Bill 2533 and Senate Bill 1211. They both went into effect January 1st of this year, and the city's ADU ordinance must comply with the requirements of those two bills. Since the first, we have already been following these bills, whether at the counter or over the phone. AB 2533 regards unpermitted ADUs and JADUs. The existing law prohibits a city from denying a permit to legalize an unpermitted ADU that was constructed before January 1st, 2018. The three changes in this bill expands it to also include JADUs. It expands the construction cutoff date from January 1st, 2018, to January 1st, 2020. And then also, we can no longer broadly use health and safety as a reason to deny a permit. We now have to rely on this specific health and safety section to deny a permit. And the second bill, SB 1211, regards replacement parking requirements. The existing law prohibits the city, the city from requiring off-street parking spaces to replace when a garage, carport, or covered parking structure is demolished in conjunction with the construction of or conversion to an ADU. This bill amends this to now also incorporate uncovered parking space along with those. And then in regards to multifamily, they added a definition for livable space, means a space in a dwelling intended for human habitation, including living, sleeping, eating, cooking, or sanitation. In regards to multifamily, it also increases the number of detached ADUs that lots within existing multifamily dwelling can have. Prior to this, lots within existing or proposed multifamily dwelling could have up to two detached ADUs. With this bill, with this bill, an existing multifamily dwelling can have up to eight detached ADUs or as many ADUs as there are primary dwelling units, whichever is less.
And on that note, just to provide you with an example, so you can kind of see how this applies in your city. Perhaps you've heard of the issue around the proposed ADUs on Camellia Way. There's an existing duplex on that lot, and I guess it hit social media some months back. But that lot is Zoned R2, and in the R2 zone, multifamily use is allowed. It has an existing duplex, so the owner is allowed to build two more detached units, which is what he's doing. The law says we have to allow it. So it was our first one. It was permitted last year. It's not finished yet, but I just wanted to give you some information so you know what's going on here in Galt when it comes to ADUs and how we are applying the code.
So if somebody has a triplex, the owner of that triplex can essentially build three ADUs?
Yes, correct.
There's, is there, there's parameters on how big the property has to be, though, right?
Correct. We do have a lot coverage maximum in effect, which is 50%. So they still have to meet those requirements. And we do, as you've, if you've read this, there are architectural requirements, and there are height requirements. So we do still, and setback requirements. So we do still have control over that. So there are cases, even in the single-family zoning, where we have one, we have somebody now that's interested in doing an ADU, and it might require them to remove a shed because they don't have a lot coverage. So we, we do track that.
And so the other piece of that is the, is the, is the parking. So, so before, if somebody has said duplex, and they're going to add two ADUs on the property, before, there had to been some certain, like, place, more or less, using layman's terms, to park additional vehicles. But now that's not a, not a thing. So they could just, allowed to just park wherever, on the street or whatever? Is that what I'm, is that what I'm reading?
It's just the spaces that have been, if the ADU is go, if they've taken their garage and turned it into an ADU, or they've used that space for the ADU, and it was originally parking, it doesn't have to be.
They don't have to recreate that parking place somewhere else? Okay. So, but maybe, so maybe my question does not pertain to this, but I, I've always had a question with, when you start building ADUs on property, you're basically essentially putting another person or maybe another family on that property. There's no requirements in place, and so you have to have a place to park additional vehicles or nothing? I mean, it's just whatever?
They are definitely gearing it to make it easier to, they're taking away those requirements we had and making it easier to.
I think I remember the, the discussion on, online about that Camellia. I think the discussion wasn't people saying, like, why are they allowed to be, to build, blah, blah, blah? I think it was more or less, if I recall, the tenant. The tenant was saying, "I rent this duplex, and so I essentially rent the duplex, and I should be able to rent the yard, but now the yard's being taken away because the, the owner of the property is putting an ADU back there." So essentially, that's what the discussion was on, that I remember.
I talked to one of the nearby homeowners, and her questioning was different. She was definitely questioning the legality of an ADU, two ADUs on that lot. But yes, big backyards, and I get it, you're paying rent for that, and all of a sudden, your backyard has now been cut in half, and you've got access from the front cutting through it now so that this future renter can access the ADU, right?
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Craig told me this a while back, but the, the definition of how, from maybe just in the last few years, about how much, because I remember him telling me there was only so many lots, and it was like a lot of the older lots in the older part of town that are very long and narrow, like in the Old Town area, qualified for ADUs. But a lot of that has changed now, or finding that a lot of properties now are, are actually, by law now are big enough for ADUs.
I think lots, there's many lots that have always qualified for ADUs. Is it SB 9 that you're referring to? Because very few lots in town actually qualify for SB 9 when it comes down to doing the calculations and the requirements.
And that pertains to what?
SB 9 is a type of lot split, so.
Oh, okay, that's right. That's what it was.
Yeah, and.
I remember now, yes.
And I've only had, I think, two calls on it. And the one, she tried to make it work and just couldn't, didn't have the setbacks, didn't have the lot coverage, and.
I was confused on that. So the, I mean, the ADUs, this is like a big thing now, because we're seeing more of it. I mean, over in my neighborhood, just not far from here, there's an ADU in the front yard. People are like, "They built an ADU in the front yard? That's crazy." And, I mean, it looks nice, but it's, it's surprising what's, what's possible now. Is there, is, there is a minimum requirement of how big an ADU has to be? Like, could it be, like, somebody could literally put a tough shed and, like, do some stuff in it, and somebody could live there?
Well. They can't, but we have been asked that. We actually get that question. Where, we get that question. Can I just buy a shed and then?
They do have to provide proper kitchen and sanitary, there are kitchen and sanitary requirements.
Would you be surprised how minimal, how small of a space someone could live in? I'm just wondering, is there actually a definition of an ADU that says it has to at least be this many square feet? Like, it has to be 40 square feet or 30 square feet or something?
I, there, I think, I think there is a minimum, or there's an interior minimum, so maybe.
You don't have to answer me now. I'm, I'm curious, though, if you could, maybe if you don't have it handy, if you could maybe shoot an email to the council. I'm just curious what that is.
We've actually had to take it one step further as part of our housing element. We've had to provide plans that are already basically approved by our building department for accessory dwelling units that you can just basically take off the shelf, and you can get a permit, obviously, and have to pay the permitting fees. But those plans are ready and available, so you don't have to get an architect to draw them up for you. And we have four plans that are available, so. And that started on January 1st.
Wow.
Again, if there's no minimum, you would take, and that plan doesn't fit in your lot, then you would be able to just reduce the size of the living room or something.
No, it would have to be as-is. So the plans are set, and you can't make any modifications to the footprint at all. You would have to hire an architect to make those changes. Yeah.
I think the benefit of having the preset, it had already gone through the building permit process. It's off the shelf, it's ready to go, so you're streamlining your building process.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Is there no setback from the street, this one that was built on the front lawn?
Yes, so it, it does. It meets the front 20-foot setback, and the side allowed for ADUs, which is four feet. And is it six feet from the residence or three feet of sky? It, it did. We, we spent a lot of our time with geometry of ADUs, like.
I'm not picking on that person, because it looks nice. I just don't, driving by, it doesn't look like it's 20 feet.
Didn't look like 20 feet, I'm going to go measure it.
What I didn't realize, and I don't, I don't want to labor this discussion.
That thing's sitting right now on the sidewalk.
I could swear that the ADU is taller than the original structure, and I thought that was, like, you couldn't do that. I mean, I backed up and looked at it, and it looks taller. And I told Craig about this, and Craig's like, "No, it's not." I'm like, "All right, well, I drive by it every day. I'm just saying." Anyways, but it does look nice.
It's a nice-looking building, but it is amazing what they put that in somebody's front yard.
So I'm going to open the public, I haven't opened a public hearing.
Oh, I think she's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I think she's almost done.
February 13th, Planning Commission, Planning Commission did also recommend. Yeah, it's just the staff recommend, there we go. February 13th, Planning Commission did recommend approval. And our staff recommendation is to, upon closing public hearing, introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galt amending Chapter 18, Section 16.080 of the City of Galt Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units.
All right. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you there. I will now open the public hearing. So public hearing is now open. If anybody wishes to speak on this item, you can simply raise your hand. I'll call you up to the dais. Council, we have any further comments or questions?
We have a speaker card. Ken Lee?
Okay, Mr. Lee.
Good evening, council members. I'm Ken Lee. I wanted to know, does commercial property have a policy in it? Because I saw where they put a placement of 10 to 20 tough shed-like buildings, pretending they were for sale. But in actuality, there were housing people in it. And that was the town of Thornton, the old laundromat next to the library. And if the use of tough sheds and things like that, would the companies know the rules? Because they'll modify their plans so that it would fit into the plans of the city and start selling those. How is the current and upcoming code enforcement on mobile homes in the backyard? If they're unseen, can they use a mobile home back there? Because, and then can you enclose a carport for living arrangements? And basically, the added vehicle parking at the location? And is there going to be a maximum number of residents in the new additions? Occupancy weight? I mean, can you build an add-on and put 20 people in there? Is there going to be so many per, per square feet? And what about noise and nuisance complaints? Who's going to be responsible for that? The homeowner or the tenant? Or are they going to play it off on each other? And what about additional pets at that location? I mean, is there a maximum of how, how many pets you can have at a resident? And is there going to be separate addresses designation? Because if you add buildings back there, how is the fire department, police department, and the health authorities going to know when they go there, there's an additional place back there that they're supposed to look at? Because most likely, they're going to look at the main house and then not find anything. So maybe they need to put, you know, the address for the A, B, or something else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. If you'd like to email the council, one of us council members, I can see if we can get you some of those questions answered and email you back. All right, any other public comment? No? Okay. If you do wish to speak, please raise your hand. I'll call you up. Counsel, any other comments on this item?
I just wanted to say, when you brought up tough sheds, when I purchased the house I'm in right now, it had an ADU, an unofficial one. And now I could legalize it, apparently, but I've torn it down mostly. But the uncles, whoever, when I, whoever lived there before, uncle lived out in that. So they had electricity. We found that the hard way, by the way, going from our air conditioning unit out to that unit. So when we dug, we found it. But, yeah, so people can live in very small, small areas, because it wasn't a huge tough shed, but it, it was a tough shed. And he lived in it, and unfortunately, you know, didn't have running water, so he utilized other avenues, but, that we also ran across. But, you know, it concerns me. I actually, Mr. Lee brings up a couple of questions that I didn't think about, such as pets on property and, and accessibility for emergency. I, I'm sure you can see it. If something's on fire and it's behind the main house, they'll figure it out. But, but if there's a medical emergency behind there, I don't know if there's designations. I don't think the post office is going to start giving new addresses.
So we assign the addresses, and that's part of the permit process for ADU, single-family dwellings. We work with Public Works and Sacramento County's GIS team to input addresses. We do it quite a lot, and.
Is it ABC, or, so same address, or?
No, it's a, for ADUs, it's its own address. So for example, on Melody Lane, I think that number of that one is just two numbers higher than the residence. And then, of course, we do a distribution to all local agencies, departments, to, the fire department gets our address distribution, right? So everybody is notified of that address, the post office, so it's quite the process.
Address is 100, it's like 100.5?
No, like 102. We try not to use point fives or one halves or.
I was actually joking.
Oh, well.
Wouldn't the house, but odd numbers and even numbers, you know, left, right side of the street, right?
Right.
But wouldn't, but if that, let's say that house was 100, wouldn't 102 be the next house already? So how could they use?
It depends. So a lot of this is going to depend on existing neighborhoods in the context of what's going on. Not every neighborhood in Galt is consistently using the same sequence. So you might live in a neighborhood where they're six numbers apart. There, you might live in one that's four, somebody else might live in one that's two. So it really depends on the subdivision. And we take that into consideration and utilize. The county has a system called the addresser, and that's what we use. And it does a lot of the work for us. It pre-populates a number based on the surrounding information. And then we try to make the decision that makes the most sense going forward.
But that would make, require the post office to bring, I mean, because most of us have community mailboxes, that they're all utilized. Anyway, someone else's problem.
Anyway, that's getting.
But I will say, one of the problems I had with that. But I will say, one of the problems I had with that unauthorized ADU, when I moved into the house, I tried to get AT&amp;T U- U-verse, and they said, "Well, you already have it." I couldn't figure out. Anyway, it was to that, that tough shed, and we finally figured it out. It was kind of funny. Anyway, sorry.
So it was like a gaming shed?
For the uncle.
They, it does happen, unpermitted ADUs or sheds or small spaces. We actually are working on one now. It was an illegally converted garage on the side of town. Young couple, tiny little baby, three hundred square feet garage, and they converted it. And they're not getting hit with a, you know, a code enforcement fine or anything for their permit, but we are working with them right now. They just brought in their drawings, so. But it is a small space. It's a very simple, and it's got everything you would need to live in.
IKEA.
Right.
And that's the change of that date, right? The 2018 to the 2020?
Yes.
Any, any ADU before 2020 now has to have that ability to go through the permitting process.
Right. Yes.
So is that just ADUs, or is this also sheds? Like, if somebody built a shed that was-
If it's a shed and it's being used as an ADU, I would say we would want to get it up to code and permit it as an accessory dwelling unit, correct?
Okay. So this is not, like, if somebody's misreading this, saying, "Oh, I built this shed like, you know, three years ago illegally or, or whatever, prior to 2020?"
No, we're not coming after sheds.
Okay. This is just dwelling, okay.
Unless somebody lives in it.
Yes.
He's moved, by the way.
Okay, so, he moved to the other garage.
All right, we were gonna go visit. All right.
Well, I had my illegal chickens in there for a while.
Any, any additional?
Before they became legal.
Any additional comments by counsel? All right, if we have nobody in the audience who wishes to speak on this item, I'm gonna close the public comment period, or the public hearing, I'm sorry. No one? Okay. I'm gonna now close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. If there's no further comment by council members, then I will be looking for a motion to introduce and waive the first reading by title only of an ordinance of the Galt City, of the City Council of the City of Galt amending Chapter eighteen, Section sixteen point zero eight zero of the City of Galt Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Pratton, seconded by Ms. Rodriguez. Can I have a roll call? Oh, sorry. I didn't know which one of you spoke faster. It was like speed. My apologies. Seconded by Councilmember Reed. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion approved. Four to zero. Give me a second here.
Thank you, Stacy and Kristen.
My computer likes to timeout on me and make me enter my password all the time. All right. With that, we're gonna move on to our next item, which is item K three. Before we do that, I need to make a statement that I'm gonna be recusing myself from participating in item K three, as my residential property is near the subject annexation area. Based on this, I have a potential conflict of interest and will recuse myself from that item due to the absence of Vice Mayor Sandu, who would normally take over in this situation. I'm deferring this item to Councilmember Pratton, who will be conducting the public hearing. So if you can just text me or let me know when you guys are done with this item, so I can come back and, here's the gavel. Please return it as you got it.
Did you wipe it down? All right. Item as discussed already. I'm going to start by asking Madam Clerk if we have notice of public hearing mailed and published in accordance to the law.
Yes, notice was mailed and published in accordance with the law.
All right. So I need to find out from our city staff with regards to the proposed annexation of number nine, Fairway Oaks, to Community Facilities District number two zero two zero dash one. I believe Amy you're going to, no? Oh, that's Johnson. I'm sorry.
Good evening, council members. This item before you tonight is step two in the process to annex the Fairway Oaks subdivision into 2020 dash one by conducting the public hearing, conducting an election for annexation to the CFD. The staff report, the recognition of the staff report identifies five distinct actions. This will be the ninth annexation into CFD 2020 dash two. As a little background or description of the project, the Fairway Oaks Development Project is generally bound by Howie Ninety-nine to the east, Glendale Road to the north, Dry Creek to the south, and Creekside Two, Unit Two, and Southdale Court to the west. This process is a requirement of the, one of the conditions of approval for the Fairway Oaks subdivision project. The purpose of the CFD is to create a continuous funding source for police services, fire services, and city maintenance services to ensure new development projects fully mitigate their impacts. The Fairway Oaks subdivision consists of approximately one hundred and sixty-two parcels. Should these parcels annex into the CFD, the city will receive approximately a hundred thousand dollars annual in revenue for municipal police services, that's special tax A, and approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars annual in revenue for maintenance services for streets and roadways, streetlights, parks, parkways, open space, et cetera, special tax B. In addition, Consumer CSD will receive approximately fifty thousand dollars in revenue for fire and ambulance and paramedic services, that's special tax B. The, the assessment will adjust annually for inflation. Should council complete these five distinct actions tonight, then staff will return on March eighteenth to request that council adopt the ordinance to annex this development project into CFD 2020 dash one. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions by council members?
Not necessarily a question. This is just the, the same thing we've been seeing with the new developments coming in. And, and this is them paying their fair share for coming into the city where, such as my house, has paid all these for thirty years. Obviously, with inflation and everything, the price is different. But the existing homes either are still paying on similar type LLDs or whatever, or have paid off JPAs and think, and Melrose and, and stuff because they've been here long enough, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So this is them paying their fair share?
It is, yes, and that is correct. Each project has different quantities of different items, and so those are all calculated for each project.
Councilmember Reed, anything?
Of course I do.
Yo.
So it's, there are a couple of questions. So my first question has to do with conducting, I think it, what do we, what do we call it? An election? Right? If they're go, if you're gonna reach out to the, the people right now that approve this to go forward, not us, but the landowner, it's going to be the landowner that says, "Okay, yeah, I'm gonna let you put a ta, put this tax in place on the properties in which I'm gonna sell to other people." And those other people now have no say in whether or not they pay the tax. Right? Which in some cases can be almost close to, not exactly, but close to double what their property tax is. And so when I, I talked with the city manager about this yesterday, was I think that us as a city and the realtors in the area, we need to do a better job at letting these people know exactly what they're getting themselves into. Because I've heard it from more than one person that they were surprised on how much they were actually paying when, when the tax bill came due. And I can, and yes, it's in all those pit, that stack of paperwork that's like this big when you go sign for a house. When you get about three quarters of the way through, you're like, "I just wanna get out of here." Right? So I think that's one of the things that we might look at doing moving forward, is trying to better educate the people that are buying homes in our city on, "Look, this is how much you're going to have to pay," so that it's not so much of a surprise when they get that first bill. Because it is, I mean, I understand it's, it's, it could be up to two percent, which is, would be double the property tax, but we've done our due diligence in limiting that to one point seven five. And so it's not that. So we're trying to do our part, but I still think that we can do a better job in getting the, getting the word out on how much these people are actually gonna pay when their, their bills come due.
Can I say something really?
Yep.
So, just on that, I went through the, the house tour down at Riverland in the Dry Creek Oaks, and they had a special flyer that pointed out every single, and it was handed to everyone that came through. I don't know, I am, I, not Lennar, because I didn't take any paperwork from them, but the Parlin Oaks, they had something similar. So I think they're getting wise, because people are defaulting on their loans. They're the ones financing them, so they're, they're having issues. So I, I don't think we can require that, but that, I don't know, maybe we can require the, them to have a separate, make sure that people are-
Well, there is, there is a truth in lending law that, that forces those figures to be shown.
Sure.
And you do get a big stack. I know, I've seen it and been involved in it, but, but that, that comes out before you get anything, the truth in law statement they get. So, I hear what you're saying. Yeah, it's easy to sign those papers.
Yeah. And then it's what, for thirty years? Or is it forever?
It's in perpetuity.
That means forever?
These are ser, these are maintenance services, these are ongoing services that are provided to residents.
That's, that's the maintenance one? Is there another one that is like a-
So there, there's three. There's a police services, that's an ongoing assessment.
Right.
Fire services are ongoing, and the maintenance, parks and public parks is ongoing.
Okay.
Except for CFDs that are, infrastructure CFDs, because that, you pay those off, right? Infrastructure bonds. So there's two kinds of CFDs. You have maintenance CFDs and then infrastructure CFDs. The citywide one always includes a maintenance services component, which is police, fire, maintenance. But yeah, if you had a CFD that had, to the extent it has infrastructure, that will in theory get paid off.
And is this annexation have that, he just said it, the, the one that, the infrastructure-
I think the citywide one is just for maintenance service and maintenance services.
But does, does this one have the infrastructure? Okay. That's it.
It was the Liberty Ranch one that we just approved, the continuation for the bond, or for them to sell the more bonds. So those are the ones that will eventually go away, right? The thirty-year infrastructure bond.
Yes, and there's also been assessment districts that have been utilized by a lot of our existing home builders. So Lennar and Parlin Oaks are the ones that you just referenced. They both utilized skip financing, which is state financing for sometimes public improvement, sometimes they finance fees, but really it's sort of a gap financing mechanism for them to make the project pencil. And so for a lot of our higher-density projects, we've allowed them to utilize that, and that's in order to really incentivize them to get the homes developed on the site. But those are thirty-year assessment districts. Yes.
Okay. Moving on. All right. So I'm gonna open a hearing to protest comments and questions from interested persons, including persons owning property within the annexation number nine, Fairway Oaks, of Community Facilities District number two zero two zero dash one. So it is open. Do we have anybody in the audience that wants to come up and speak? Nobody on this one? So we've had staff comments. Council members, any further questions or comments on this subject? Madam Clerk, have we had any written protests?
No, written protests have been received.
Madam Clerk, as to, I'd like to know whether as, to whether there are any persons registered to vote within the annexation number nine, Fairway Oaks, of Community Facilities District two zero two zero dash one, and if so, the number thereof?
No. The County of Sacramento Registered Voters has certified that there are no registered voters within annexation number nine, Fairway Oaks, of CFD 2020 dash one.
All right. And if all of the taxable property in annexation number nine, Fairway Oaks, of Community Facilities District number two zero two zero dash one, has consented to holding a special election on March four of 2025?
Yes.
All right. Are there any further public comments? That didn't spark anybody there, huh? Okay.
A public comment.
Move on. Okay. Are there any concerns, or I'm sorry, concurs that the special election may be held on March fourth?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that the eighteenth? I'm sorry.
Go ahead. You had a, throw something in there. All right. So if there's no other further public testimony, we'll close the hearing. All right. We've got a couple of motions on this one we're gonna need. The first one, I'm looking for a resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, California, calling a special election and submitting to the qualified electors of territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Galt Community Facilities District number two zero two zero dash one, Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, the question of levying special taxes within that territory, annexation number nine, Fairway Oaks.
So moved.
Okay. We've got Councilmember Rodriguez moved.
I'll second.
We got a second. Mr. Reed, could we get a vote?
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton, is the next item a resolution as well?
So, next minute, next one is a motion to approve the following resolution.
Yeah, you can just, just say the first sentence or-
Okay. So for the resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, acting in its capacity as, as the legislative body of City of Galt Community. Enough?
And that's declaring the result?
That is a-
Providing the resolution.
Declare, yeah.
Declaring the results of a special election and such.
Okay. So this is the, this is the resolution declaring the result?
Yes. And I get a motion?
I'll move.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Can we get a vote?
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
All right. So passes. All right. We've got one more, and this one calls for a motion to introduce by title only the waive further, to waive further reading of the following ordinance. This ordinance is, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in the Community Facilities District, including certain annexation territory identified as annexation number nine, Fairway Oaks, into the City of Galt Community Facilities District number two zero two zero dash one, Public Services, to complete the annexation of the property to the Community Facilities District.
So moved.
All right. We have a, moving on this one. Got a motion. We get a second.
Second.
We've got a second on this one. Can we get a vote?
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Okay. We can bring back Mayor. Got a good text. He's fast.
All right, moving on to item L, regular calendar. Have anything this evening?
Nothing.
Item M, communication?
Nothing.
Item N, city clerk's report?
None.
Item O, comments by staff, Public Works Director John Griffin?
Okay, I will try to make it quick. At our last council meeting, I neglected to report on some quick action by some of our utilities team members that averted a devastating catastrophe for the high school FFA community. I don't know if you guys are aware, there is an FFA barn out at the wastewater plant. And on February 13th, a number of the utilities team were on, at work early to prepare for the storm that day, or that evening, that came in that evening. At the FFA barn, a heating lamp was left on in place that blew over and which the hay inside the barn start, caught fire. All the goats and the goat pens were headed on the corner of the pen, trying to avoid the flames. A number of staff who were there early noticed the fire and responded to the fire, calling the fire department and also grabbing a water hose to extinguish the flames. And a couple other staff, so staff that responded were Tom Costelli and Anthony Stern and two other staff, Scott Jones and Bradley Hobgood arrived shortly after to provide support. So their selfless action and quick responses put out the fire and saved all of the animals that were inside the barn. So again, that goes to all the other duties that our, our maintenance staff tackle.
Well, we got CSD here. Can you give, give those folks an honorary CSD badge of some sort? Well, please pass, pass on our thanks to those, to those gentlemen, John.
Will do.
Any other staff comments?
Oh, sorry.
Mr. City Manager?
Interim Community Development Director, Ms. Mendez?
Good evening. I briefly just wanted to provide everybody with a quick update on the Measure Q campaign that we are starting. So, not really starting, but we've had Genesis, our community engagement analyst, who has been, she's been working on a logo for Measure Q, and the idea is essentially that we're going to start pushing out this logo on, on any material that we are advertising that has been funded by Measure Q. So these signs will be going up in, really in any projects that have Measure Q funding tied to them. And we have talked about creating the signs for the landscape areas that are getting updated. Also, we have banners that we will be putting together to update the community on improvements that are happening as a result of Measure Q. So the water slide, the skate park, Walker Park, there'll be a standalone sign out there as well. And so any of the advertising on social media will also include the Measure Q logo. And really what we're attempting to do is just make sure that the community is aware that, of the projects that we're spending Measure Q dollars on, and to ensure that that is recognized out in the community so that people realize that we are spending those dollars on projects as promised related to parks and recreation and special events. And we'll be working with Jackie as well in the special events that are tied to Measure Q as well, to make sure the advertising is included. So when you see this out there, again, we're going to try to blanket it, so the community's familiar with it. In addition to that, I wanted to just let you know that we have been working with Argent Development. They are the project managers that are in charge of the Liberty Ranch development. And Argent has been working closely with the welding department at Liberty Ranch. And Liberty Ranch is, their welding students are designing and fabricating much of the monument signage that will be included out at Liberty Ranch. So we're excited to see those designs, and the students will be fabricating those working with Argent, and Argent will be compensating them through the school as a result. So just wanted to share that information because I thought that was a neat offer that they had made to those students. So that's it. That's all I have for this evening.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mendez.
Parks and Rec Director Armando Solis?
Yeah, I just want to let you know what's coming down the pike regarding the Parkmaster Plan. We will be bringing that to the Parks and Rec Commission on March 12th. And then we'll be setting a date to bring that to you, so you guys can review that plan. I also want to thank our special events staff, Jackie Garcia and her staff, for the successful kickoff for our Saturday market. Finally had some weather that cooperated with this. And I want to thank my park staff that are working really hard to keep the weeds down and, you know, keeping the parks clean and those streetscapes looking good. So they're, they're working really hard, and as you can see, as you walk through the front door today, that they're even doing the redesign, so.
Caesar?
And then also coming down the pipe is the code enforcement presentation regarding trailers, RVs, and boats and driveways. We anticipate that coming in on April 1st, FYI.
All right, does that conclude staff comments? Okay. All right, next would be item P, comments by city council members or future agenda items. Mr. Pratton?
No future agenda items. I did want to thank Director Griffin for the second tour we got. Very impressive what we got to see on the water side and some of the maintenance issues. Lot of stuff being done by very few people. And I think the other part was the positive culture of the employees. Very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Reed?
A good, yes, so I attended the Consumers Groundwater Authority luncheon. So it was nice to kick off since I wasn't able to go to the very first meeting because it was the day after I got that assignment. I got to meet some of those people, and we have another meeting coming up tomorrow morning. So we'll get to my first interaction with that. Then I wanted to say how, what a great job the, the police department and the ready, the rest of the city did on the award ceremony this last week. It was very well done, and there was a lot of good people that got a lot of good recognition. And on top of that, right after that, we went over to the unveiling of the Officer Graywall's memorial, which was also fantastic, and the people that put that together and, and formed that thing, it, it looks great. So thank you for involving us in that, and great job. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reed. Ms. Rodriguez?
A couple, a little few things. I neglected to say in my call box, little soapbox thing, that in lieu of the, of the call boxes, they will be amping up the 511. Occasionally run across them on the highways, the big blue signs that say, if you have any questions on your travel, you can call 511. So they're going to utilize some of that money toward amping that up a little bit. So you can call 511 to ask your directions if you want. So you'll see more of those signs going up. I too wanted to really thank Public Works because, again, I was just amazed, and like Mr. Pratton said, the, just the camaraderie that that team has, it was phenomenal. I, as, when I was a business owner and had 30 people under me, I would have died for that type of just cohesion that they had as a team. And I, I admit, I, I, what's the term that the kids use nowadays? I geeked out a little bit with the, some of the things that, that we were shown with, I, it's a, it's an oversized vacuum. I kept trying to tell myself, but it's pretty cool. I could use a vacuum that sucks up rocks and stuff. But I did come home and tell my 19-year-old gamer son that I have a job for you now. You can go and drive this little remote car down in all the tunnels underneath Galt. That, what a fun thing to do. That was pretty amazing. So thank you so much again for another great tour. And, and anyway, I just was really impressed with that. Going to what Mr. Solis was talking about, I think almost every weekend I drive around, and your crew is still out there on Saturdays and Sundays, cleaning up, mowing, you know, I, I know it's the kind of a growing season, weird season, but all kudos to them for working weekends and, and making our city beautiful. I really appreciate it, so please pass that along. And the market was phenomenal. I showed up and, yes, the weather was great, but the staff put together a phenomenal market. Jackie does a great job. And even though she tried to snag me into a picture and I refused, so, but that's okay. But it was great to see, to, to get that energy going downtown again. So I again want to thank the chief for inviting us to the award ceremony. That was wonderful to see. Again, talk about camaraderie there too. It seems like the entire department is, you know, on the same page, and just everyone was supportive of everyone. And, and I thought it was funny, and I think I mentioned this to the chief at the time, but, you know, here we were congratulating, or everyone was congratulating those who, who won awards. And all that kept coming to my mind was, thank you. This is what we all need to be saying to these officers and, and staff and employees, just thank you for serving. And again, all of these staff members, Parks and Rec, Public Works, Police, it's just kind of the unsung heroes that we don't see, but without them, our city does not function. And, or we hear about it, you know, when the grass is an inch too long or whatever. So I, just real kudos to all of staff, really making our community, bringing our community together. And I did want to say, I do appreciate these tours that we've been taking. I think they're really great. I would like to see the other, and I did appreciate the, that, the tour that Rodney took us on to go and see kind of the background of the infrastructure, the, all the wires, everywhere. I would love to do other things with some of the other departments, so I don't know if we can arrange that. I really would like to go to the gun range, but I don't know that I'm allowed to do that. But just to kind of get a feel, I don't know what the other departments have necessarily to show. Like, you know, Mr. Griffin has a lot to show. But it would be fun to see some of the, the, the inner network that we don't see on the outside and just take for granted that's there. But anyway, that's all I got.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
Good, you kind of brought it up. I, one of the things that really impressed me with the awards ceremony was the amount of officers that got recognized for saving people's lives, doing CPR and Narcan. Anybody that knows my background, I've worked in many different cities as a first responder, being on the fire engine, in the ambulances, and I can't count the amount of times that I saw police officers not doing those things. And just to know that our police officers put themselves in those positions to do those things and actually take the extra steps to serve the people in this community to that level really stood out to me and really impressed me a lot. So I just, I, she made me think of it when she mentioned it. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we pass that on to the, to them.
All right, well, thank you for your comments. I'm sure they appreciate it. I don't know how I'm supposed to follow all that. I mean, ditto? Yeah. The scary thing about what you said is the fact that we have such a crisis with these kinds of things that I remember the last award ceremony I was at, thinking to myself, you know, how many times our police officers had to administer Narcan? It's like, it's just crazy that that stuff is just so, that's, that's the scary part of it right there. But with that, I am sorry I missed the award ceremony, as, as hopefully someone who was there mentioned. I was out of town up, up north for, for work, and I was gone for two days, so I was, apologize, I missed that. I did see the memorial, it's fabulous, and so congratulations to everybody who was honored at the award ceremony. I'm sure it was all well deserved. Saturday market was great. Again, I had to leave town quickly right after noon, but I was able to catch a little bit of it as I, I came outside after we closed our business, and it looked well attended, and the weather was great, so hopefully we'll have, knock on wood. Good luck on the next one. And thank you for all the landscaping work. It, it does not go unnoticed. I noticed, I have heard zero complaints from anybody about any landscaping. So, yeah, I know, again, I shouldn't say that out loud, but it's that season, the weeds are going to, yeah. So, but thank you to your, to your guys out front. City Hall looks great. The parking lot looks great, so thank you, Public Works, if, and I'm sure you guys are involved in that, so that looks great. And let's see, the C Street project, I just want to say I was, those boulders out there are just kind of crazy. I was like, whoa, those are some big rocks right there. Yeah. So, let's see what I got. I wanted to bring up something, Mr. City Manager. It was mentioned about the Liberty Ranch project earlier. I meant to bring this to you, but I had a couple people, I had a couple ladies come to me who live nearby to the Liberty Ranch project, and they were very frustrated with the fact that they, saying that they've made some complaints, but they feel like their voices are not being heard. But the construction apparently starts really super early in the morning, like 4:00 or 5:00 AM. They can hear construction going on, and they're like, don't we have a noise ordinance that says you can't start at certain times, whatever? So I was, I, I promised I would look into it. So, you know, I know this is a big project, and I told them that hopefully, you know, but they were pretty upset. They just moved here a while back, like maybe last year. And anyways, they, they came into my business to talk to me about it, so can maybe look into that. Last but not least, I want to thank Sean Thomas from the Galt Herald for being here. These late meetings all the time, on his own time, to cover these important things and put them in the paper. So thank you, Sean, I appreciate that. And with that, what's the over-under on the meeting tonight? Oh, okay, so I just want, all right. All right, well, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 8:17.